Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. Please rise for the pledge and I'll provide the opening remarks. So it's come to my attention that today is a very important day locally, at the state level, the national level, and even the international level, because today is International Be Kind to a Lawyer Day, apparently.
I like this day.
So I wanted to let Matt know we're going to be nice to him today, and his entire staff, and any other attorney who's going to be before the city council today. Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate having you here today. We look forward to hearing from you on our many items. I would encourage you to turn your cell phones off, or at least to vibrate. If you have any challenges hearing the proceedings today, you can speak to our building commission attendant for a listening device, or you can access the closed captioning on the back of the room in the screen to my right. Madam Clerk.
Item six, to consider a Class C liquor license for House of Lee located at 2316 North 72nd Street.
The public hearing and vote on number six today is today. Proponents, please. Right there by the microphone, yeah. Just your name and address?
My name is Ajit Adhikari. It's a business located at 2316 North 72nd Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68134.
Great, thank you. Did you want to introduce yourself too?
Sarita Adhikari.
Name and address?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. This is in my district. I'm supportive of your license. I'll take a motion.
Thank you.
There's a motion to approve in a second. Roll call.
Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you. Look forward to trying it.
Thank you.
Yeah, bet.
Item seven, to consider a Class C liquor license for Lighthouse Pizza located at 1004 South 74th Plaza.
Public hearing and vote on number seven is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President. Members of the council, David Houghton, 2804 South 87th Avenue. Here on behalf of the applicant, Lighthouse Pizza, or actually LPHR LLC, in their application for a Class C liquor license. Some of you may be familiar with the restaurant already. This is a sale to a new ownership group who already has a Class C liquor license. The hours of operation will be ten to ten daily. If the council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed? There's a motion to approve in a second. Roll call.
Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item eight, to consider a Class C liquor license for Pivot Prime located at 13665 California Street.
The public hearing and vote on number eight is today. Proponents, please.
Afternoon, Jeremy Curlin, Business 13665 California Street, Pivot Prime.
Robin Shear, the same address representing Pivot Prime.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. Well, I just want to say I'm looking forward to you opening, having that location back open. It's the old mahogany spot.
Correct.
Which I enjoyed. But also, I'm looking forward to, I know the Salted Edge is fabulous, but I have to drive way too far.
Oh, good.
So I'm looking forward to having this restaurant right down the street from my house. I can walk to it if it's not cold enough. So I just want to say thank you, and I'm looking forward to having businesses reopen there, because so many closed, but now we've got new ones coming in, so.
Thank you.
So, and with that, I'll do a motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve in a second. Roll call.
Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Item nine, to consider a Class I liquor license for Meddies located at 17255 Davenport Street, Suite 111.
The public hearing and vote on number nine is today. We have the applicant by Zoom, maybe also representation, if you want to, yeah.
That's correct. Good afternoon, Mr. President. Members of the council, David Houghton, 2804 South 87th Avenue. Here on behalf of the applicant, Meddies Village Point LLC, doing business as Meddies, for their Class I liquor license. Meddies will be located at 17255 Davenport Street in Suite 111, and it is a new restaurant concept. If the council has any questions, we'd be happy to address them. And I see my client is also in attendance via Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie, would you like to also address the license? We'll get you off Zoom. Try that.
All right. Yes, so we have currently opened Meddies in Village Point, and are definitely looking forward to opening up our bar as well. Just excited to be in the area. We're a brand-new concept in Omaha, but we're looking forward to expanding further there as well.
Great. And then you should name an address for the record, too?
Leslie Dixon, 17255 Davenport Street, Omaha, Nebraska.
All right, thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed?
Second.
There's a motion in a second to approve. Roll call.
Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Good luck.
Item 10, to consider a liquor license addition application for Big Fred's Pizza located at 1101 South 119th Street, Suite 121, to add an outdoor area to their Class C liquor license.
Public hearing and vote on number 10 is today. We have the applicant by Zoom. Mr. Marante, we'll get you off mute here in a second. Okay, try that.
All right, thank you. Philip Marante, M-U-R-A-N-T-E, 7858 Poppleton Avenue, here for Big Fred's Pizza.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed? There's a motion in a second to approve. Roll call.
Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thanks.
Items 11 through 13 can be considered together for Bel Air Village Replat III located southwest of 120th and Shirley Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Bees Communication and Support. Item 11, an ordinance to rezone this property from R2 District and R3 District to R3 District. Item 12, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate this property into that district. Item 13, a resolution to approve the final plat.
The public hearings and votes on items 11, 12, and 13 are today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Scott Los, 10836 Old Mill Road. Here on behalf of Abad, a religious facility on southeast corner of 120th Shirley. They're looking at doing a building addition and some upgrades. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed? There's a motion in a second to approve. Roll call.
Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thanks.
Item 14, an ordinance to rezone property located at 6636 North 31st Avenue from R4 35 District to R5 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
This item was postponed from the March 4 meeting. The public hearing was already held. The vote can be today. If a council member wishes to address the item, they can press their lights. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you. I would like for the applicant and then the residents of that area to come up and share some thoughts about the discussion that was had regarding this project.
Would you like the applicant first, or?
Yes, the applicant first and then the neighbors.
It's the applicant here today. Doesn't look like it.
Wow. And then if you guys would come up, please.
Hello. April Sloan, address 6551 North 32nd Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm against it. These are the design that they want to put in, like they have a top and a bottom for these two duplexes for four bedrooms each. And during, we have tornadoes, so like during tornadoes, where would the upper level of families seek shelter if there's no basement? Because the lower half is technically the basement of these duplexes. But also, I think the lots are too small to have two duplexes on them. There could be upwards of 12 kids. What kind of yard space? Will kids have to play? What kind of parking arrangements will there be for upwards of two 12 or 16 vehicles, depending on the driving ages of the people living in the homes? Normally, that parking on that spot is like very crowded, but recently it hasn't been. But with that being said, again, there's still not a lot of parking for that area to accommodate those two duplexes proposed for multifamily. Excuse me. I do feel it would just be in the best interest of our neighborhood to keep it as single-family. If that owner chose to put two single-family homes there, it would be better suited for that versus the multifamily idea that he has. Yeah, that's about all I have right now. I mean, again, they're not here to answer the questions, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jessica Oswald, 6542 North 32nd Street, Omaha. I oppose two duplexes on the corner, because I don't think there is enough room either. The owner originally talked to us and stated that their goal is to provide affordable housing for single moms. And if that is their goal, you know, room for the children and adults to play and be outside is important for their mental health, well-being. A single duplex would make more sense to provide these necessities. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Scott Creachy, and once again, thank you so much for allowing us to address our concerns about the property on 6636 North 31st Avenue. I, too, as a resident of that neighborhood, also oppose the rezoning of that lot to a multiple-family dwelling. Some of the things that we learned over the last two hearings, the first, the planning board that we met that went ahead and approved it for zoning, and referred to the city council. Last city council, we had the opportunity to speak to you, and I appreciate that, and referred over to this meeting today. There is a lot of questions that I have and a lot of concerns about the building, about the rezoning, and I understand this is about a rezoning and not the actual building and the construction of the, but once again, the gentleman and the LLC did not show up to address any concerns that we had. Once again, as the planning board did discuss several months ago, outreach of this gentleman of the LLC to meet with the neighbors and address our concerns, which that LLC and that gentleman failed to do. Some of the reasons why I feel that this is inappropriate or not allowed to be, I feel that should not be approved for rezoning. First and foremost, a house versus a home. And I promise I won't rant too long, but we do know that a house in which he is supposed to build is just a structure. A home is what we make it. It's part of the community, which we have shown up, day in and day out. We have shown up to voice our concerns about this. And once again, what is really a home? It's inferred that it's a place of comfort, belonging, and safety. Safety, once again, safety. I believe some of my neighbors already mentioned that they're concerned about two duplexes with four residents, four bedrooms, 16 individuals in that lot. The planning board already expressed its concern about the parking was not up to code, and understanding the planning board did say it would need to be revised before that would be allowed to move forward. But could you imagine on a lot of land, two duplexes, 16 bedrooms? Doesn't sound very safe to me. Why? As expressed earlier, and I'm sure you have always saw this, this is what they're planning to build here. As was already stated, where is the green space? Where is the individual's going to play at? 16 cars on that street, they're going to play out in the street? Back alley? Where's all the, not to mention, how many people here have pets? Where are they going to walk their dogs? 16 bedrooms. Where are they going to take all the pets? Where are they going to walk them? Where are they going to play in the afternoon? So I question that. Also, it was cited several times that this was approved by the planning board as acceptable for rezoning. And I question that, because the planning board answered that question, can it be zoned? And the answer was yes. The city council has an opportunity to say, but should it be rezoned? And I'm hoping today that you look at our questions and say, and our concerns, and say that it's not appropriate to rezone that. One of the things that was cited by the planning board was it falls in line with the Omaha Master Plan. Well, so I looked at that. So I looked at the master plan, and I have a couple of questions about the master plan. Are we talking about the master plan that was approved back in the 90s? So, and the master plan that is supposed to be updated next year? So just keep that in mind. The master plan from Omaha, even though it has been updated once or twice here, 1990. I don't know about you, but AOL was the website for the 1990s. What was it? Netscape? Social media did not exist in 1990. The western border of Omaha was 144th Street. That's how long ago that was. That's the guidance that we are working off. In a few short months, the city will redevelop and reconstitute and approve a new master plan. Things have changed in 30 years. All I ask is that we simply deny this, and gentlemen can go ahead and reapply, to see if it's in line with the new master plan. A master plan that we have a voice in approving and having our voice in saying, what do we want Omaha to look like? So in that master plan, but back to the master plan, it called for management of growth. Check. Positive city image. Check. But it also said preserve and promote cities' physical, ethnic, and cultural heritage. And Omaha should celebrate its diversity and protect its historical neighborhoods. I would say our neighborhood is historic and needs to be preserved. Furthermore, I looked a little bit deeper on the master plan, and I found the Omaha Housing Affordability Action Plan. So this was in 2022 when it was updated, and it said there are, Omaha is saturated with multifamily dwellings along 30th Street, which again, when you look at the master plan, when the master plan says that these types of housing should be equally dispersed throughout Omaha, a master plan that says West Omaha was 144th, are we really in line with the master plan of 1997, I believe, which finally was approved? But as stated for that master plan, some of the concerns that was addressed in the master plan was not only affordable housing, but it was also predatory landlords. That's not an accusation, just a statement, because it actually says that. Landlords discriminating based on tenant's income, the need to create better incentives, and out-of-town investors and cash buyers. Now, I don't know about you, but I can't go down the block without seeing a, we'll buy your house for cash thing. So I question if that's actually in line with the master plan. And why is that important? A few years ago, I was the security director in Fargo, North Dakota. And back then, the whole thing about the United States was, the whole thing was about how are we going to bring individuals from countries that were war-torn countries? How are we going to do these refugees? If we remember, a handful of years ago, it was all about bringing refugees over to the United States. Fargo went ahead and built a lot of establishments for these individuals. And what happened was, was a gentleman worked with the church, brought the refugees over into these multifamily dwellings. Couple weeks later, things started happening. Every Monday, I would meet with the mayor, I would meet with the city council and the local police, and I would say, they would start to talk about all this crime that's going on. And what happened was, the individual who bought and built those establishments brought the refugees over, but what happened was, he brought all the refugees over of the warring tribes. And so they brought the war over to the United States.
Make sure you address the US, please. And then, Ms. Johnson, this is not the public hearing, but I do have some questions. I suppose you have some follow-up questions, too?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
So would you, are you close to a closure? Are you close to a closure?
I am. I'll sum this up. So once again, the city council is able to, my concern about the master plan is, as stated on your website, preserve, now let me say, okay, here we go. The Affordable Act must be in communities' best interest by promoting and maintaining a high quality of life. That's what's on your website. And I call into question if building these duplexes provide a high quality of life, simply based off of no space, inconvenient parking. And once again, the question I have is that it also states that preventing negative changes to neighborhood character, such as slip-ins, conversions, and spot zonings. And spot zonings, according to the master plan, is one of the things that I'm most concerned about. This should not be approved. And once again, we're so close to a new master plan, I just ask to, that you reject the rezoning for right now. And once again, I just appreciate your time.
Thank you. Don, if you don't mind coming to the mic in lieu of the applicant being here, there are some questions.
I think Mr. Fanslaw is, or, yeah.
Did you want to answer those questions?
Dave Fanslaw, City Planning. This isn't a TIF project, so Don wouldn't have any knowledge of it.
I don't, okay.
So I'll answer any questions you have for me.
All right, thank you. We've had a few people that have come up to the mic and expressed some concerns about the zoning. One, I'd like for you to kind of provide some additional information to those concerns. And to the applicant, it's somewhat concerning to me that they're not here today. If they're, you know, if they're in fact want to do something good for the community, it's somewhat concerning to me that they're not here.
Yeah, so I can't answer your question, why the applicant is here or why they're not. That's on them, not staff or my department. So when we talked about this a month ago, it's, in our opinion, this is a simple request. Anywhere, we have multiple residential zoning classifications, and this part of the city is designated as low-density residential. An R5 zoning classification, which is being sought with this case, is considered a low-density residential district. It's not multifamily, it's duplexes. It's not single-family, although you could do single-family in R5. But in this case, the applicant asked to be rezoned from R4 to R5 to allow for the duplex. We still consider that low-density residential. It's not an apartment building, it's not a triplex, it's not a fourplex. It's simply just a duplex. I'm not gonna, I don't think it'd probably be fair to get into what our master plan in the future will look like. It will, I'll correct, it will be a few years away before that's done. There's a lot of engagement that still needs to happen. But I would guess that our master, our next version of our master plan will probably seek to densify neighborhoods. As we all know, we don't have unlimited ground in our future. So over the last handful or two years, we've promoted density. Again, not that this case is that, because this is still considered low-density. So I don't, I guess I don't know, I mean, it's, it's a very simple request. We see them all the time. It's a low-density residential district that they're asking to go to. The master plan says that this neighborhood should be low-density. We could, there's a lot of pieces or parts that you can pull out of the master plan for a lot of the cases that we, for every case that we deal with. But when we receive a request like this, we see, we check to see if it's master plan compliant, and in this case it is, which is why staff recommended approval. And why the board recommended approval as well.
Thank you. So I see, I appreciate your comments, and I appreciate the work that your staff has done. But again, I'm somewhat concerned, this is in my district. I'm concerned about someone putting forth the effort to request a zone to be changed, and yet not be present to face the music, if you will. We also have three individuals here that live there, and they're somewhat concerned about the appearance, the look of this change, and what it would look like. Again, this is a zoning change, so we don't have any information as to what the end product is going to look like. But yet, this applicant isn't, to me, doesn't appear to be respectful enough of this process to even show up.
Yeah, again, I can't speak for why the applicant is here or not.
Yeah.
But I will say, one thing I probably should have said last time I had the mic was, if a request is master plan compliant, then staff is required to recommend approval. And with the rezoning per the Chapter 55 zoning, we are not required to condition a rezoning. It's either master plan compliant or not. So we couldn't condition the zoning, just so, you know, we can't condition the zoning for actual building plans, actual site plans, what the building's going to look like, elevations. It's either master plan compliant or not. And again, in this case, the request from going from R4 to R5 is compliant. And our master plan talks, and I'll say one more thing, our master plan talks about a lot of things, and as we all know, we have a housing shortage. So, you know, staff looks at these kind of requests, is just building that inventory that we all talk about, that we need to provide more housing to help with the affordable housing crisis that we're facing. Thanks.
Thank you. Again, this is in my district. The applicant, to me, failed to be here present to dance to the music, to even consider talking to me, talking to this body, even being available to answer questions regarding neighbors. It doesn't look good, doesn't smell good. And again, I do appreciate the work that has been done by city planning. I understand that housing is needed, but I would feel a little bit more comfortable with the applicant being present before I would vote on a yes to this movement of rezoning this area. Because if the, it wasn't rezoned yesterday, but if we move forward, we're rezoning it today with the applicant not showing up. So I move that we deny this application. Or deny the process of rezoning it.
There's a motion to deny. I don't see a second, at least not yet. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Creachy, I just got one question. If you can come up really quick. Turn the mic, please. If I said your name right, I hope I did. Okay, I was close. Good afternoon. Just one simple question. I'm looking at the minutes from the planning board meeting on January the 8th.
Yes, sir.
And then reviewing this again, it said it was asked of, let's see, Mr. Hankins, did they have a neighborhood meeting at that time? And the answer was no. Since January 8th, have you had any meetings with anybody from the development at all? Since January 8th, have you had any meetings with anybody from the development at all? I had shown, so there's all, is that no for everybody? Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. Mr. Fansler, a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
I appreciate the work your staff always does fairly with developments. And this one is term, an affordable housing project, which we all support. If this gets denied, Dave, what happens if the council denies this today?
Dave Fansler, City Planning, it retains its R4 zoning and whoever owns it can build something that is allowed in the R4 zoning district.
Okay. Thanks, Dave.
You bet.
That's all I have, thanks, Pete.
Thank you. Mr. Harding.
I'm gonna pick up on something Mr. Bagley just said first. Dave, is there a period of time that the same project cannot come back before? Or would it have to go back through Planning Board? It would have to go back through Planning Board.
It would have to go back through Planning Board.
So, they would just have, there's no time delay, or no time that it would have to, if you will, lay dormant before it could go back to Planning Board?
That is correct. There's usually time, there's time periods for use permits and stuff like that, but not for rezonings.
Okay. I guess, just a couple of general comments. We hear, I do appreciate the neighbors and their concerns and coming down on a number of occasions to voice those. But we do hear a lot of those same concerns when we're talking about apartment projects that come before us or duplexes, in this case. And, first of all, we would not be issuing building permits if there weren't proper shelters in the event of a tornado that someone brought up. And we can't assume the number of occupants that might be in each one of those rooms or the number of cars they have. I mean, for example, each of those that testified here today, if they had a rather large family, they could have 16 occupants in their house. So, those, I don't think those are things that, although, or might be kind of pressure, additional pressure on an area, those aren't things that we can, you know, I don't think that we can weigh in on when we're making our decisions. Or, there are a lot of people who live downtown, and they don't have green areas to go play or walk their dogs, but they have dogs and they have kids and they figure out how to make things work. That's why we have parks in Omaha. So, those are some of the issues that I know are emotional, but I think we need to be, put those emotions aside when making some of those decisions. And then, as it relates to the master plan, as Mr. Fansler just pointed out, too, that the master plan does contemplate situations like this. And this is master plan compliant. And there will be upgrades and reviews in the new plan in a few years when it's adopted. But just because a portion of the master plan today has not been changed over the years does not mean that that, that part of the code is out of date. It could very well be that it's, there's good reason for it and there's no reason for, that it hasn't changed over the years. And as was brought up, too, I think speculation on my part, speculation maybe on Mr. Fansler's part, but I think most of us would probably agree that going forward, the master plan will probably encourage and feature more density. And I, I know there was, it hasn't been brought up today, but there were some issues as it related to what was presented at Planning Board where the parking area was gravelled. That can't happen, so I know maybe that's already kind of a decided issue. I will say, though, in conclusion, that I do, I do have concerns, too, that the owner, although I think the owner and the manager of the project both appeared at Planning Board, did not appear on the March 4th meeting when this was laid over, or today, and has not had any contact with the neighbors since Planning Board. So, I do, I do think that's a little bit out of line. I wish, I would have seen that. But again, I think this is a fairly standard request. I appreciate the neighbors' concerns, but I think it will be, the occupants of this residence, as I think Scott was saying, we were talking about a home versus a house, they want a home, too. They want to fit in the neighborhood, they want to be your neighbors.
Thank you. There was a motion to deny, and there was no second, so that motion has now died. And the reason why I did not second a denial, I did second the layover last time, was similar to Mr. Harding's remarks. I do believe this is master plan compliant. And in general, these are things we should be encouraging throughout the city, not to diminish the concerns brought to us by the surrounding neighbors. But I, too, find it very concerning that the developer has not engaged since Planning Board and apparently has not engaged neighbors at all. I don't think that's okay, especially not when you're building a new development on a current vacant site in an established neighborhood. So, I wouldn't be prepared to deny today, but I would be prepared to lay over today again. I really think that developers should be here and should be in contact with the neighbors at a minimum.
I'd like to do a motion to lay this over for two weeks.
Okay. Mr. Bagley does have the floor. Was it, there's a motion to lay over for two weeks?
Yeah, I was just doing the motion to lay over for two weeks.
Okay.
And there was a second by Mr. Hug? Okay, Mr. Bagley, you're in line next.
Okay, thanks, Mr. President. So, in fairness to Councilmember Johnson, I did not second her motion because I had some questions that I needed answered, which I asked. And in light of those answers, I wouldn't, I'm not gonna vote to support this. I would have made a motion to second to deny for the simple fact that, that March 4th, they weren't here to answer questions. They didn't meet with the neighbors since then, and they're not here on, whatever today is April 7th, April 8th. So, I'm not gonna support this today for those reasons. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Harding.
I was just going to ask Councilmember Milton, if she would, maybe, I think it's unlikely something's gonna happen in the next two weeks. If maybe we've made it, I haven't looked at the calendar, but I don't know what four weeks does to us.
Weeks, April 29th. And I would say, perhaps, somebody could, that has their contact. I don't know if it's appropriate for planning, but if somebody from planning maybe has their email, might want to let the applicant know that if they're not here on the 29th, they will not have my support, and it sounds like they won't have the support of many others. So, giving them the opportunity to come and present on April 29th. And if they don't show up, I will support the denial.
So, your substitute motion?
So, substitute motion to lay over to April 29th.
And same second by Mr. Hug? Any further lights for now? I don't see any. Roll call on the layover.
Harding. Hug. Johnson. Milton. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to one.
Thank you.
Item 15, an ordinance to rezone property located at 2009 South 7th Street from GC District to R7 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
This item was postponed from the March 4th meeting as well, but the public hearing is today on this item, as well as the vote. I'll take proponents on number 15. Is there a proponent on number 15? I don't see any. Are there opponents on number 15? Please come down.
Nate Koenig, K O E N I G, 607 Cedar Street. Do have a diagram if we have the picture up. I've come to speak today not necessarily in stoppage opposition to the project for the sake of avoiding change. We're pretty familiar with change in our, in our neighborhood. Whether it's, you know, Dolman Rose just across the street in the Old Grassos area, or Dolman Flats and the Old Grace University dorms. What I'm more concerned about is similar to what the previous applicant experiences. No contact from the developer whatsoever. They purchased this property a little over a year ago and haven't had any communication whether then or about this project. And I have some concerns with the changing from a one-single-family home to multiple townhomes, primarily because along the eastern portion of the property line is where my property sits. And there is a four-foot tall retaining wall. So, the questions are, how is all this construction, tearing down, building up, going to impact that? As well as storm water runoff, going from, you know, natural grass and permeable surfaces to an increase to non-permeable surfaces? How is that going to impact all the storm water running off from the southwest corner of their lot to the northeast, which goes into ours? There's about a 10-foot drop-off, and the highest point is towards the street, lowest point's towards our house. So, I was hoping to get some of those questions answered today. Apparently, a proponent's not here today, unfortunately. And the reason why the building plan's important for this, even though it's a changing of zoning, is the specific one is to, again, increase from a single-family home to a, I believe it was R7, multifamily residential district. So, I was, had those concerns, wanted to make sure they were heard by the developer since I haven't been able to get in contact with him. Not even looking up who bought it. You know, it's through an LLC and contacted them. They wouldn't give me the person's information to be able to contact them directly. The tenants that were there previously didn't have their information for me to be able to contact them. So, it's just very concerning to have someone that wants to develop but isn't willing to contact any of the direct neighbors to that. So, don't know if you have any more questions for me, or?
Not a great day for applicants so far today. Did you have a diagram you were trying to show us?
Yes.
I'm told that, if you put it on the table there, I'm told that'll work, right? Over there?
Facing you?
Facing up, yeah.
So, this is just? So, what that is, is just an overlay of the plan that was presented to the Planning Board over the current lot. And you can see on the right side there, that's the property line to my backyard. Again, four-foot tall retaining wall between that property and mine. On the bottom side, the south side, is the alley that they are proposing to add additional parking slabs. And according to this, the final parking slab would go all the way to my property line. And from the southwest corner, again, to the northeast corner, there's over a 10-foot gradient drop. And so, all the water will flow within, you know, 12 to 20 feet of my foundation walls. So, there is just some concerns that I had that I was hoping would be addressed with, with the, I believe there's supposed to be a new plan that was presented in this, but this was what was attached to the current agenda.
Okay, thank you. Might have some follow-up questions for you here in a minute.
Perfect, thank you.
I think we had another opponent, right? Please come down.
Hi, my name is Kelly Enriquez. I live on 2003 South 8th Street. So, it's like the street before where this development is happening. And I guess my concerns are pretty much the same in that I've been to the last meetings. The last one that I went to was, I believe, sometime in like March. And also, the applicant wasn't here. And I know that he had postponed it, but I did not know that beforehand. So, I pretty much, like, in a way, had to like take time out of my day. And I even had paid time off to come here. And so, I had to make time to do that. And then, to find out that the applicant wasn't even here is also pretty concerning to me because I have many questions about this development. And it does impact where I live, too, just because I have neighbors that also have like the same concerns. And a lot of them have tried to contact this person. There's no contact information. I think that is pretty much concerning, considering that it is a pretty big development that's been wanting to happen there. So, I guess, a lot of the questions will go unanswered since he's not even here. But from my understanding is that this person pretty much purchases like houses or like lots and just flips them. And it seems like it's not even wanting to be affordable, which if it was trying to be affordable for families, I would be for it. But to me, it just seems like he's just trying to see how much he can make off of rent and like, and so I think that is what I'm against. Not very much against like the rezoning, but I am against of what he plans to do once he actually builds those developments. And so, I guess, I would like more information from him, just so I can have some of these concerns and questions answered. But yeah, I think the biggest thing, too, is like the parking space. There's no parking space. And from what I've understood, there's not really much of a plan to see if like that parking space will be accommodated, because most of the parking is on the street. So, it's kind of gonna complicate, also because our streets are very narrow and just trying to fit as many cars as they can, I just feel like is not appropriate. And could also be a safety hazard, too, because some people tend to like speed down the street. And if you don't have enough time to like make way, like that could cause an accident. And I've seen that happen, not on that particular street, but streets that are close to there. So, I guess I have many more questions than I did at the start of being notified of these changes. So, that's pretty much what I have. Thank you.
Thanks for coming back down today, too. Any other opponents that want to speak today? I don't see any yet. However, I'm not gonna close public hearing in anticipation of some, of some council member questions. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you. The way we start off relationships and how we build them is very important. And when we have a person coming into a community and proposing something to be done and they don't consider the feelings or the sentiments of those individuals that's already there, it doesn't, it doesn't build for anything to get better. I mean, again, we have to start off relationships in the beginning on a good note. And disappearing, not showing up for City Council gives an outward appearance, whether it is an appearance or not, but it gives an outward appearance that Big Brother is reaching his arm because of his ability to have money to come in and change the landscape of this neighborhood without even having any consideration of that community. Now, I'm not saying that that's the case in this case, but I can't tell. The relationship building is not starting off correctly. And for us to say it's okay when we've clearly been disrespected as a body because they can't even show up, again, and dance to the music or even try to mitigate some of the concerns that the neighbor has. Yes, he owns the property. However, he's changing the environment in which residents are already present. Again, I would have to say, this is concerning. This is not how business transactions normally happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harding.
I don't completely disagree with what Councilmember Johnson just said. Although, I think, in this case, this is actually a downzoning from GC, which is a commercial use, to R7, which is a residential use. And it could have been approved with a conditional use permit at the Planning Board just with the GC zoning still intact. And therefore, it never would have even come to this body. A conditional use permit is, if it's approved at the Planning Board level, then is done. Does not, unlike a special use permit, which does have to come to us even after Planning Board approval, it could have been done at that level. But it looks, it appears that the applicant may be at the encouragement of the Planning Department to go to the R7 zoning because it would be, therefore, more master plan compliant. Even though it's master plan compliant with the GC and a conditional use permit, it is, if you will, more compliant with the residential zoning on it. And I would, I would guess that that's probably why, why the action or the proposal was to change it to R7 and not just GC with a conditional use permit. So, there was a comment in the, in the Planning Board notes that- So there was a comment in the, in the planning board notes that, actually before I get to that, I want to, Mr. Fanslow, a simple zoning request does not require, it's not an approval or require the site plan, is that correct?
Dave Fanslow, City Planning, that is correct.
Okay. I noted though in the, in the planning board minutes that there was a request from the planning department to have the applicant submit a new site plan prior to coming to the city council. And I don't think that was included in our packet, although again, it's not necessarily required since it's a zoning request and the site plan is not a requirement of. But I think the reason for that was because there was some additional parking or garages that were, that the developer said were going to be attached to part of the townhomes. I don't know if you have any knowledge of that.
It sounds vaguely familiar, but yeah, like you said though, the site plan's not required for a zoning. But there was some question about how it was going to look and where they were going to park, but...
But again, those, those are, as it relates to the request for a rezone are, that'd be great information to have, but not, is certainly not a requirement of. I mean, once it's properly zoned, then you can just come in with a building permit request as long as you're, as long as you're adhering to all the requirements of what that zoning is for that building permit, then it would be issued, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And again, this is, this is actually a down zoning. I mean, it's a less intense use of the ground. And again, as Mr. Fesserson said, it's maybe a bad day for the developer to show up, but it could have been too that there was the assumption that because it's a down zoning, a less intense use of the ground, that it wasn't, it wasn't so controversial.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hug.
Well, I think this is different than the previous issue we just dealt with because this is a public hearing. And I, I am concerned that the developer owner is not here today for the public hearing. I have heard from other residents who are not here today, but they have contacted me expressing concerns about it. And they too have said the same thing is, we don't know who bought it, they're not talking to us, we haven't heard anything from them. So I think in order just to try to get the owner here to answer those questions so we can all move forward with some level of confidence, I'm going to make a motion we lay this over for 30 days.
April 29th?
Yep.
Okay, continue the public hearing?
Second.
Yep.
There's a motion, a second to that effect. Ms. Melton, did you still want to speak?
I do, I just have a quick question for Mr. Fanslow. What are some, what are some things that could be built on this as a GC? Just so that the neighbors know what, if they don't get the zoning, what are things that the owner of this property could do without ever coming before any of us?
Dave Fanslow, City Planning, good question. So GC zoning is a commercial zoning district. I refer to it, refer to it as one of our dirtier commercial zoning districts. You can do auto body repair, a car repair. There's a number, there's a list of uses that are allowed by right in GC zoning that would require nothing more than a building permit. Of course, they'd have to meet all the site development regs that are spelled out in the zoning code. Yeah, there's a, there's a long list of permitted uses that if somebody could hit those site development regulators, they could pull a building permit with my department.
And that, and that's what I was thinking, I would be more concerned with what they could do with the property if it's not rezoned. Like this benefits the property owners around it because it's limiting it to residential, which is what's around it. I'd be very concerned that if they wouldn't get the residential zoning, that you could have a used car lot sitting there, which would be awful. Like that's not what you'd want to live next door to. So I just, I wanted to be, to be clear that this zoning purpose, although I completely agree that the developers should be here and I support laying it over, I would much rather see it residential than see it become one of the long lists of things that it could become under a general commercial zoning that it has now. So just, but you should be able to contact this owner and have that conversation with them. So I'm going to support that layover.
Thank you. Mr. Begley.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'll support the layover as well. I see in the notes for this, on March 3rd, the applicant requested the postponement to today. So I'll support Councilmember Hug's motion to layover until, what was the date, April 29th?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, Mr. President.
There's no further lights, there's a motion, a second to layover until April 29th, they continue the public hearing. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe, Begley.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thanks for your testimony.
Item 16, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow automotive repair services in the LA District located northeast of 132nd and 9th Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public, public hearing and vote on number 16 is today. Proponents, please.
I'm Steve McClary, Larry Smith Engineering, 55 Schuman Boulevard in Naperville, Illinois.
Okay, thank you.
To let the record show that I drove 450 miles to be here today.
Yeah, I was gonna say. You just improved the applicant stock already during this meeting.
Yeah, looking around.
Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. There's a motion to approve in a second. Roll call.
Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton.
Yes.
Rowe, Begley.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thanks for being here. Welcome to Omaha.
Item 17, a resolution to approve the 29th and Jackson Town Homes Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located southwest of 29th and Jackson Streets in an amount up to $200,445.
Public hearing and vote on number 17 is today. Proponents, please.
Oh yeah, good afternoon, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. This is a residential infill redevelopment project on a vacant lot located at, well, southwest of 29th and Jackson Streets. A new row home project with six market rate rental units will be constructed. The developer is Gilbotarar LLC managed by Max Honaker. This project is in the urban core housing and mobility district, so there will be a contribution of some TIF revenues from the project to help with the streetcar construction costs. Total investment in this neighborhood, this is just kind of north of the Supermercado store, that gets you oriented, total investment in the neighborhood is about $2.2 million. The TIF support is $200,445 for the project. This project meets the required criteria of our TIF program, it's been approved by the TIF committee and the city planning board, complies with the goals of the city's master plan, and we ask for your approval.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
I'm Max Honaker, owner, developer. I live at 16245 California Street, here to answer any questions you might have for it.
Good, thank you.
Marta Sonia, London Yomehia from Midwest Businesses and Projects, and the same, if you have some question, we are ready to ask.
Thank you. And your address too?
I'm sorry?
Did you provide an address too? An address for the record?
The address, oh my, 2216 South 170th Circle, Omaha, Nebraska, 68144.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents?
I have a letter, email from way back in 2019 that addresses TIF. I am against this TIF project as I am most. And it's mostly because of the lack of transparency about TIF. We had this starting way back in 2019 and it still has not been cleared up. We the people do not trust what you're telling us. We do not trust what you're not telling us more. And we want more information. I'd like to display this on there rather than read it, but you're my councilman and I would like an extra minute or two if possible, Mr. Fesserson, I know you can do that.
Go ahead and put it on the table.
But this is the root of the matter.
Go ahead.
I don't know if the other people can read it, but it's about the downtown area. South Omaha and downtown being declared supremely blighted in order to develop it. I've never been aware of this area downtown and going towards South Omaha as being extremely blighted. That's what the law basically says. Now, you people like to come in and change zoning and all this and maybe neglect the city areas in order to declare it extremely blighted. And I'm going to say this, that I suspect the area of Northwest Radio between Coming and Hamilton Street, east of 45th and very close now to 50th, and going up Saddle Creek, by the way, is a hell of a lot more extremely blighted than anything in town. Nobody's talking about it. When I ask a city council member about it, well, take it to the mayor's hotline. I wonder how many citizens have had success with that. But if you drive up Northwest Radio Highway, slow down by the Megasaver, stop and shop at the street vendors area there, just to the west of them, and then look to the east and then drive that area and you'll see what extremely blighted it is. There's a lot of homeless people in there, a lot of vacant buildings probably from out-of-state landlords.
Larry, you got a...
They've broken in.
Larry, you have to speak to 29th and LeWorth.
They've broken in, they've boarded up windows, they're leaving trash all around the area.
Speak to 29th and LeWorth, they're all just going to be out there.
It is terrible and the city is doing nothing about it.
All right, thank you.
And I pay taxes for them to do something about it.
Any other opponents to number 17? Seeing none, public hearings closed?
Motion approved.
Second.
There's a motion, a second to approve. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe, Begley.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items 18 through 51 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent, these are items 18 through 51.
James Laurent, 2200 Dodge Street, 68102, Jocelyn Hart Museum.
Thank you. Here as a proponent on number 19, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other testifiers on these items?
My name's Sergio Arpiza, managing partner at Chutter's, 12152 L Street, agenda item 18.
Okay. Here as a proponent for that?
Proponent, yeah.
All right, thank you. Other testifiers on these items?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue. On number 39, I'd like a little more discussion about it. I drive that area sometimes to go down to the recycle centers. And I'm not aware of the area between 15th and 16th Street on California as having been vacated. It looks to me like it's being developed, probably by Creighton University or somebody. So I'd like a little discussion on what they mean by assessing the owners for any damage for vacated property. Who vacated it? Why? And is that being built on right now? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other testifiers on these items? Seeing none, public hearings are closed. Mr. Stube, if you want to answer that question on number 39 that Mr. Store posed first, the He said one minute.
I'll need to look that up when I approach. Second.
Okay, motion in a second on these items?
Yeah, Bob Stube probably worked. So this is essentially to, to essentially put together the damages committee to consider a potential vacation of California Street from 15th to 16th Street. And that would be in proximate to Creighton University.
Thank you. Any, I don't see any further lights on these items. There's a motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe, Begley.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 52, in ordinance loving a special tax and assessment on real estate in the city of Omaha to cover the cost of constructing sidewalks in District Number SWR 2024-01.
The public hearing on number 52 is today. Proponents, please.
It seems to be that my name has come up on this number 52, Mr. Fesserson.
Okay, go ahead.
Congratulations on your election, sir, and all the rest of you, and disappointment as well. Anyway, Don Yar Johnson, the Johnson Requesting Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. Now, this property at 4928 North 52nd, number 52. It seemed like the folks didn't get a permit or they would have seen that the property was in probate court, therefore, the auditor who made a mistake got to send that back to probate court because we'll be having court proceedings on that April 30th. So send it back to probate court and then...
So I think this is not pertaining to the item you're talking about. I think you're talking about a board of equalization issue. This is about sidewalk improvements throughout the city.
The young lady, I asked her about this, she said number 52 was concerning...
This is the special tax.
Yeah, see, so I own the property, but at the same time, we've had this discussion. I say send it back to probate court because I told the probate court and that Mr. Trump and I are working to put some judges in jail. In the meantime, in the meantime, send it back to probate court because I said this attorney that you appointed is the worst attorney ever come out of Creighton Law School. I told the guy, he's to turn his license back in, but they send it back and then we'll send the bill, the guy that's supposed to pay the bill, make sure he pays the city of Omaha, so I won't be stuck with the bill. So we're having a hearing on the 30th, so I recommended before the council sent it any further, to send it back to probate court. One of the judges had retired. He found out that my cousin was Annie Oakland and Jesse James, and he's going to retire.
Any other proponents on this, on this item, number 52? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item 53, in ordinance to approve a right-of-way agreement with Habitat for Humanity to acquire private property for public improvements associated with the Blue Stem Prairie Second Edition subdivision near 48th Street and Huntington Avenue.
Public hearing on number 53 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item 54, in ordinance authorizing issuance of a purchase order to Catalent Solutions Inc. in the annual amount of $928,200 for the purchase of sodium bisulfate.
Public hearing on number 54 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item 55, in ordinance to approve the Green Lake Midtown Apartments Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement.
Public hearing on number 55 is today. Proponents, please.
Oh yeah, Don Seaton, City Planning, excuse me, and I'm here for any, answering any questions you may have.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Good afternoon, Justin Spooner, 11516 Miracle Hills Drive Suite 400, Omaha, Nebraska, 68154, here with the applicant, 35 Howard LLC, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, 68132. I believe that area is over close to Turner Park possibly, and I don't believe it's dilapidated and blighted. Howard Street, 35th, three-story market rate units are not necessarily affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Next item.
Item 56, in ordinance... Item fifty-six, in ordinance to approve the Seventy-second Farnham Apartments Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement.
Public hearing on number fifty-six is today. Proponents, please.
Oh, yeah. Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning Department, and again, I'm here for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Good afternoon, Mr. President. Council members, Jim Bouger, one-zero-two-five-zero, Regency Circle, here on behalf of the developer. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents?
Larry Store, five-one-five Lafayette Avenue, six-eight-one-three-two. I'm basically against this, because I'm also wondering, well, is this going to be delayed like the crossroads forever? When is it going to get started? And when will you be jumping across the street to the south side of Seventy-second? That's been blighted for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Mr. Begley?
Thanks, Mr. President. Jim, you don't have to, but I wanted to thank your client, Mr. West. I know he's out of town. I called him last week. We were looking to extend that recycled dumpster there, and we got that for another month, so I appreciate his allowing us to do that, and we're still looking for another location, and Council President Fezreson's been working on that before I was here. So I made the call to him, and it was good for everybody, at least we got another month. So nothing to do with the TIF, but I just want to recognize that for Brett. Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks for working on that. No further lights. Next item.
Item fifty-seven, in ordinance to approve a third amendment to the land lease agreement with SBA Structures LLC for operation of a cell tower at Fire Station Forty-two, located at three-one-two-zero North one-hundred and Second Street.
Public hearing on number fifty-seven is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents?
Good afternoon, Omaha City Council, Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson Requisition Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation, forty-nine twenty-eight North Fifty-second Street. It has been come to my attention from my associate of the United States Chamber of Commerce and the United Omaha Chamber of Commerce, that before this contract on Fifty-seventh of the cell towers be signed, that everything that John Ewen has done should be double-checked, because he's the worst treasurer we ever had.
All right, Donnie, you're off topic. Any other opponents to number fifty-seven? Seeing none, public hearings closed.
Item fifty-eight, in ordinance to establish a Class A flammable liquid storage district, number A-dash-one-six-nine, located at one-zero-four-zero-two Potter Street.
Public hearing on number fifty-eight is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, my name's Chuck Acker. I'm, I know it's Attorney's Day, and I'm definitely not an attorney. Glad I graduated from college, but I'm representing Midwest Maintenance. I work with Jamie, the owner. She's out of town, but we submitted a-
So I think we're at number fifty-eight right now.
Yeah.
Are you-
From Midwest?
I think you're-
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think you're intending to speak to fifty-nine, right?
Oh, am I? Okay. See, I told you, I'm not an attorney.
We'll still be kind to you.
I'll sit close.
Yeah, yeah. Any other proponents on number fifty-eight? Seeing none, any opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed.
Item fifty-nine, Midwest Maintenance Company, Inc., appeals the rejection of their bid from March twelfth, twenty-twenty-five, for janitorial services for Omaha Public Libraries.
So number fifty-nine, it's not a public hearing, but it is a bid appeal. So first, we'll hear from the appellant, state his case, so your address, please?
Yeah, great. So the business address is twenty-nine oh-one Q Street, Omaha, six-eight one-oh-seven.
Is your name one more time?
Charles Acker. Sorry.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So we did the bid walk, which was required at all the city libraries for the professional cleaning of the library facilities, and it required a five percent bid bond. And so we went through the process, bid, sent the bond check, and we sent six-thousand-nine-hundred ninety-two dollars and forty cents, which should have been six-thousand-nine-hundred-ninety-two dollars and forty-three cents, so we're three cents off. When we were alerted that there was a mistake, we quickly reissued a check, and I brought it down. Again, I understand we didn't get that next check in until after the bid had closed, so we accept whatever you guys decide, but it was a three-cent clerical error on a fairly significant, and we did the work and walked through, and we've, you know, Midwest Maintenance, if you guys don't know, has been in Omaha since nineteen sixty-five, and tried to do a good job and hire people, and the owner's a very good person, but not that that matters, that we're off three cents, but I'm here to represent, to see if we could be considered for the bid. This doesn't mean we win. This means that they'll at least look at the bid and consider us.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Hang around for some questions, probably. Mr. Bloom, the city's position?
Yes, Jeffrey Bloom, City of Omaha Lot Department. We are certainly sympathetic as far as to the bidder. However, while the amount of the deficiency is very small, we have limited options based on our ordinances. Generally, when a bid security is deficient on its face, when we open the bids, we must reject the bid. Unless another amount is set, generally, bid securities must be not less than five percent. Unfortunately, in this case, it was only three cents short, but that is still based on the ordinance, less than five percent. Well, we are allowed to seek corrections on what we would consider minor defects. Minor defects are really what are spelled out in the ordinances, and the code states that minor defects specifically shall not include submission of a bid security less than five percent. So while we certainly do understand that this is a very small amount, and we're certainly sympathetic to the bidder, at this time, our recommendation would be to deny this appeal.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Melton, your lights on.
Thank you. I think this might be the most unfortunate case I've ever seen. You can have a seat. And first, Charles, I'd like to recognize the fact that your company does do a good job, and it cleans other facilities that we may or may not be sitting in. Your company does an excellent job. I read and reread the ordinances. Unfortunately, I am an attorney, so I did, I did read them. I literally tried to find just any words that I could even try and twist, because three cents seems absolutely absurd, and when we say in government, we need to use common sense, but then there's the law. And this is one of those old-fashioned, this isn't about the shall and the may, and this one says shall and must, and it can't be an amount less. I find this absolutely ridiculous, and in fact, one of the things that I plan to do is do a formal request to law to amend these ordinances, to give a little more, to allow the city council to make common sense decisions. So when you're three cents short on a seven-thousand-dollar bid, we may reject it, but we can also use common sense. The way our ordinances are written, we literally can't unless we're going to violate our own ordinances, which then opens the taxpayer. When I say, people always say sue the city. Well, when you sue the city, you're suing us, the taxpayers, I mean, everybody that lives here. And so I just want to say that this might be one of the most heartbreaking, ridiculous votes that I actually have to make because of the way our ordinances are drafted. Completely support you. It was a click. I mean, I can't tell you, I have my own business where I've had checks sent back, because, you know, I'm in a hurry, I'm typing out the numbers, and you see a three as a zero, or I think I've done a three as an eight, and unfortunately, it wasn't on a bid. You know, it was something where I got a notice, you owe five more cents. Yeah. I literally hate this, but because of the way this reads, the other bidders, and in other cases that we've had, where we've had to deny bids because of our ordinances, because somebody didn't make two copies when they were supposed to have one. And we've had a number of these cases along the way, where I know a lot of us have had significant heartburn, and we thought instituting the electronic process was hopefully going to make things better, so we didn't see kind of these, what we would call kind of stupid things, that we, just rectify that, because in any other business, a business would do it. But we are government, and so, and you're a great company, you have a great reputation, and you do great work. And by the way, I think your people are extremely, not only are they good at what they do, they're friendly, they're nice, and so I appreciate it, and which is why, I know this doesn't help you with this contract, but this is going, I am making the formal request after today, my chief of staff will work on it, to law, I've already talked to law about how we want to change this, so that in the future, we can actually make some common sense votes on these, and it's not so, this, the ordinance is so rigid, it doesn't allow us to make a common sense decision and vote to allow your bid to stand. So that's, again, in all the years that I've been here, this might be the hardest one that I can take, but at least I'm going to take action moving forward to allow us to make some common sense. See, I think this is a minor defect. Three cents is a minor defect, except it specifically states in our ordinance that it's not, and that's what I'm having a lot of trouble with. I don't know, if somebody else wants to try and convince me, convince me otherwise, and that we can, that we wouldn't lose a future lawsuit, which would end up costing the taxpayers even more money, because I have a fiduciary duty also to our taxpayers. So, yeah, this is, this is a hard one, and I'm really sorry for whoever mistyped it, because I've been that one many times.
Thank you. Mr. Hug?
I would not want to be the person that typed that check. I think, I won't speak for my fellow council members, but I think we all individually and upon our own selves examine this particular situation to try to find a way to facilitate your request to deny, but it's just not there, and in a practical matter. If we were to approve it, then as Councilmember Melton said, we'd open ourselves up potential lawsuit, and unfortunately, you know, no matter how much we'd want to do it, no matter how much sense it would make to do it, at least three cents worth, the practicality tells us that we just can't. But I, again, not speaking for my fellow council members, I don't think there's one council member up here that isn't sympathetic. So thank you for your time and coming down today.
Thank you. Mr. Rowe?
Thank you, Mr. President, and, you know, I went to bed last night, and I was clearly going to vote to allow this appeal, because I too believe it's ridiculous. Three cents is not material, it's just not right. But then I talked to the attorneys today, and I appreciate their legal advice, I appreciate Councilmember Melton more than she knows, and respect her opinion, and I think she flipped my vote this morning when we had a briefing on this. And my vote wasn't going to matter, but it is ridiculous, and I would like, if Councilmember member would allow it, I would like to join that request to law, that we get that changed, because I think you could put all seven names on there, but I specifically want Don Rowe's name on there. I'm going to have to vote to not get sued. I mean, I appreciate that, but it really does pain me to know that three cents is the difference between a contract and not having a contract. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. When we discussed this in a briefing, this era, I had the same sentiments regarding the three cents. In fact, I shared with the attorney that was discussing that with me, that I would want it to entertain a directive to change our ordinance regarding this. So I would like to be included on the amendment to these, to this, to address this. But also, more importantly, I asked the lawyer that presented this to me to look at other municipalities and how they handle situations like this. So I just want to let you know that when I was briefed on this, I had the same concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no further lights, is there a motion?
With the most regret I've ever had- Making a motion. No one wants to make it, so I'm, I'll do it. I'm going to make the motion to deny the appeal.
There's a motion a second to deny the appeal. No further lights. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug. Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Begley.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thanks. Thanks for your testimony.
We'll name the amendment, but Charles Acker amendment.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
It's now the council's intention to go into executive session, in which we will only discuss union negotiations and land negotiations. Is there a motion?
Motion to go into executive session?
There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Aye.
Begley.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Rowe.
Aye.
Begley.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.[370.74]
Is that on current? I think another.
No, that's fine.
Are you hurrying to go to Tibaliba?
Yes.
...
The City Council is currently coming out of executive session where we only discussed union negotiations and land negotiations. Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
Second.
Motion in a second, roll call.
Harding. Is he here? Okay, hug. Johnson. Is she out here? Johnson is absent for this one. Melton.
Yes.
Row. Vaguely.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero.
Your motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call.
Harding. Hug. Johnson's absent. Melton.
Yes.
Row. Vaguely.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Meeting is adjourned at four thirty.